Lord, we need to go. Table has a question. For meditation, shall return to the book of Revelation, chapter 20 verses 11. Before the Lord's visit, we will be in the 11th and 12th verse of the book. We will be in this room for the prayer.
Today, I saw a great white throne and him that sat on it, from whose face the earth and the heaven fled away, and there was found no place for them, and I saw the dead, small and great, stand before God, and the books were open, and another book was opened, which is the book of life, and the death was judged out of those things which are written in the books according to their works.
Praise be to God. Dear God. Our God is God of love. Our dear God is the one who loves us. On the other hand, he is God who judges us also. On the other hand, he is God who judges us also. As a coin has two faces. It has two faces. He is a merciful God, loving God, God who is all-sufficient for us, long suffering, he pities us, he respects us, he gives us all things pertaining to life and God's works. He is the one who judges us. But on the other hand, we must understand, our God is one who judges also. But on the other hand, we must understand, our God is one who judges also. You heard yesterday about the heart, the condition of man. You heard yesterday about the heart, the condition of man. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. You heard yesterday about the heart, the condition of man. You heard yesterday about the heart, the condition of man. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned.[150.82][150.82][S01. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned.[153.82][153.82][S01. The heart is corrupt and it is deceptive about all things that is mentioned. Now, God knows that man is born in sin and he continues in sin and he grows in sin, he gets established in sin and he dies in sin.[165.82][165.82][S01. God knows that man is born in sin and he continues in sin and he grows in sin,[168.82][168.82][S01. God knows that man is born in sin and he continues in sin and he grows in sin,[171.82][171.82][S01. God knows that man is born in sin and he continues in sin and he grows in sin, God did not create him in that condition.[177.12][177.22][S01. God did not create him in that condition.[179.82][179.82][S01. God did not create him in that condition.[182.82][182.82][S01. God did not create him in that condition.[185.82][185.82][S01. God did not create him in that condition.[188.82][188.82][S01. He had a sincere heart, he has a crystal clear heart.[191.82][191.82][S01. He has a crystal clear heart.[194.82][194.82][S01. He has a crystal clear heart.[197.82][197.82][S01. But instead of obeying the commandment of the Lord,[200.82][200.82][S01. Because he obeyed the voice of Satan, everything changed.[203.82][203.82][S01. But instead of obeying the commandment of the Lord,[206.82][206.82][S01. Because he obeyed the voice of Satan, everything changed.[209.82][209.82][S01. But God makes provision that he will again come back to him.[212.82][212.82][S01. But God makes provision that he will again come back to him.[215.82][215.82][S01. But God makes provision that he will again come back to him.[218.82][218.82][S01. That is the meaning of the word religion.[221.82][221.82][S01. That is the meaning of the word religion.[224.82][224.82][S01. The word religion is misunderstood by all, by many at least.[228.82][228.82][S01. The word religion is misunderstood by all, by many at least.[231.82][231.82][S01. It is derived from the original word religia.[236.82][236.82][S01. It is derived from the original word religia.[239.82][239.82][S01. It is derived from the original word religia.[242.82][242.82][S01. That is turning back to the living God.[245.82][245.82][S01. That is turning back to the living God.[248.82][248.82][S01. The mind of man which was corrupted, it will again turn back to her,[253.12][253.12][S01. That is what we call repentance.[255.82][255.82][S01. That is what we call repentance.[258.82][258.82][S01. So the word of God not only speaks about the love of God,[264.52][264.52][S01. It speaks about the judgment of God also.[267.52][267.52][S01. It speaks about the judgment of God also.[270.52][270.52][S01. There are some youths who ask us,[273.82][273.82][S01. Why do you try to scare people about heaven and hell and such things?[277.82][277.82][S01. There are some youths who ask us,[280.82][280.82][S01. There are some youths who ask us,[283.82][283.82][S01. There are some youths who ask us,[286.82][286.82][S01. According to the American statistics.[289.82][289.82][S01. According to the American statistics.[292.82][292.82][S01. Sixty-eight persons believed that there is something called heaven.[296.82][296.82][S01. Sixty-eight persons believed that there is something called heaven.[299.82][299.82][S01. About ninety percent of them want to go to heaven.[303.82][303.82][S01. About ninety percent of them want to go to heaven.[306.82][306.82][S01. But out of them, only six percent of them say that if I die today, I'll end up in hellfire.[312.82][312.82][S01. But out of them, only six percent of them say that if I die today, I'll end up in hellfire.[315.82][315.82][S01. But out of them, only six percent of them say that if I die today, I'll end up in hellfire.[318.82][318.82][S01. But out of them, only six percent of them say that if I die today, I'll end up in hellfire.[321.82][321.82][S01. But out of them, only six percent of them say that if I die today, I'll end up in hellfire.[324.82][324.82][S01. What do we read in the book of Psalms 11?[327.82][327.82][S01. What do we read in the book of Psalms 11?[330.82][330.82][S01. There, the psalmist says, "I sing of his mercy, I sing of his judgment."[336.82][336.82][S01. There, the psalmist says, "I sing of his mercy, I sing of his judgment."[339.82][339.82][S01. God not only makes mention about his mercy,[343.82][343.82][S01. But when we reject the mercy of God, then we'll end up in judgment.[348.82][348.82][S01. But when we reject the mercy of God, then we'll end up in judgment.[351.82][351.82][S01. I have liked today and tomorrow, God willing, I would like to speak on this subject, books in heaven.[360.82][360.82][S01. I have liked today and tomorrow, God willing, I would like to speak on this subject, books in heaven.[363.82][363.82][S01. I have liked today and tomorrow, God willing, I would like to speak on this subject, books in heaven.[366.82][366.82][S01. There are so many libraries, famous libraries around the world.[371.82][371.82][S01. There are so many libraries, famous libraries around the world.[374.82][374.82][S01. They provide so many instructions, so many information to us.[380.82][380.82][S01. They provide so many instructions, so many information to us.[383.82][383.82][S01. But at the same time, we should understand, there is something called books, books in heaven also.[390.82][390.82][S01. But at the same time, we should understand, there is something called books, books in heaven also.[393.82][393.82][S01. You know that your name is written in heaven?[396.82][396.82][S01. You know that your name is written in heaven?[399.82][399.82][S01. Or you know, it is book, there is something called book of judgment also in heaven,[404.82][404.82][S01. Or it will be written in the book of judgment.[407.82][407.82][S01. Or it will be written in the book of judgment.[410.82][410.82][S01. In this text, what did we hear now?[414.82][414.82][S01. In this text, what did we hear now?[417.82][417.82][S01. Books were open, another book called the book of life.[422.82][422.82][S01. Books were open, another book called the book of life.[425.82][425.82][S01. So there should be at least three books in heaven, is it not?[429.82][429.82][S01. So there should be at least three books in heaven, is it not?[432.82][432.82][S01. Books were open, another book called the book of life.[435.82][435.82][S01. Books were open, another book called the book of life.[438.82][438.82][S01. Books were open, another book called the book of life.[441.82][441.82][S01. Books were open, another book called the book of life.[444.82][444.82][S01. Books were open, another book called the book of life.[447.82][447.82][S01. And I saw the dead, small and great, stand before God,[450.82][450.82][S01. And the books were open, and another book was opened, which is the book of life,[454.82][454.82][S01. And the death was judged out of those things which were written in the books according to their works. Praise be to God.[461.82][461.82][S01. Books were open, in a plural, and there is another book called book of life.[466.82][466.82][S01. Books were open, in a plural, and there is another book called book of life.[469.82][469.82][S01. Oh, young man, young woman, don't despise the word of God,[476.82][476.82][S01. Don't despise what is mentioned in the word of God,[479.82][479.82][S01. Don't despise what is taught to you.[482.82][482.82][S01. Probably, you are here today and you will have to accept the truth, whether you like it or not.[488.82][488.82][S01. Probably, you are here today and you will have to accept the truth, whether you like it or not.[491.82][491.82][S01. What do you mean, Shagodarne, Shagodarne?[494.82][494.82][S01. Do you want to accept what you have done?[497.82][497.82][S01. Do you want to accept what you have done?[500.82][500.82][S01. Do you want to accept what you have done?[503.82][503.82][S01. Do you want to accept what you have done?[506.82][506.82][S01. Do you want to accept what you have done?[509.82][509.82][S01. Do you want to accept what you have done?[512.82][512.82][S01. God has not brought you here by chance, perhaps today it will be the last chance he wants.[519.82][519.82][S01. God has not brought you here by chance, perhaps today it will be the last chance he wants.[522.82][522.82][S01. More than hundred years back.[527.82][527.82][S01. More than hundred years back.[530.82][530.82][S01. A young man came to a preacher and asked him, "How far is hell?"[537.82][537.82][S01. A young man came to a preacher and asked him, "How far is hell?"[540.82][540.82][S01. A young man came to a preacher and asked him, "How far is hell?"[543.82][543.82][S01. And he knew, the preacher was really worried about it.[547.82][547.82][S01. And he knew, the preacher was really worried about it.[550.82][550.82][S01. Oh, young man, don't make a mockery of your end about the way of life.[557.82][557.82][S01. Oh, young man, don't make a mockery of your end about the way of life.[560.82][560.82][S01. What do you mean, Shagodarne?[563.82][563.82][S01. And he had one more word along with that.[566.82][566.82][S01. And he had one more word along with that.[569.82][569.82][S01. It may be nearer than you think of.[572.82][572.82][S01. It may be nearer than you think of.[575.82][575.82][S01. And as he was going on the horseback.[578.82][578.82][S01. And as he was going on the horseback.[581.82][581.82][S01. When he was turning, in a particular bend, when he came to a particular bend.[587.82][587.82][S01. When he was turning, in a particular bend, when he came to a particular bend.[590.82][590.82][S01. The horse toppled him down and trampled him and he died on the spot.[597.82][597.82][S01. The horse toppled him down and trampled him and he died on the spot.[600.82][600.82][S01. The horse toppled him down and trampled him and he died on the spot.[603.82][603.82][S01. He was trying to make fun of the preacher.[606.82][606.82][S01. He was trying to make fun of the preacher.[609.82][609.82][S01. Today, the present generation think that they are very clever, very intelligent,[614.82][614.82][S01. And they know much more than anyone else.[617.82][617.82][S01. But at the same time, as far as the word of God is concerned, there is no change you must understand.[621.82][621.82][S01. But at the same time, as far as the word of God is concerned, there is no change you must understand.[624.82][624.82][S01. In the future, we will be able to tell all the world that we are good and we are good.[627.82][627.82][S01. In the future, we will be able to tell all the world that we are good and we are good.[630.82][630.82][S01. In the future, we will be able to tell all the world that we are good and we are good.[633.82][633.82][S01. But you will never forget the Lord's work, the Lord's work is different from the Lord's work.[638.82][638.82][S01. We are living in the dispensation of scientific advancement.[642.82][642.82][S01. We are living in the dispensation of scientific advancement.[645.82][645.82][S01. We are living in the dispensation of scientific advancement.[648.82][648.82][S01. That is also mentioned in the word of God, you must understand, knowledge shall increase.[652.82][652.82][S01. That is also mentioned in the word of God, you must understand, knowledge shall increase.[655.82][655.82][S01. Today, it will be life or death, this is the time that we have to fall at the fans of Jesus.[663.82][663.82][S01. Today, it will be life or death, this is the time that we have to fall at the fans of Jesus.[666.82][666.82][S01. Today, it will be life or death, this is the time that we have to fall at the fans of Jesus.[669.82][669.82][S01. Today, it will be life or death, this is the time that we have to fall at the fans of Jesus.[672.82][672.82][S01. Once, Reverend Billy Graham was passing through a new place, had gone through a new place.[678.82][678.82][S01. Once, Reverend Billy Graham was passing through a new place, had gone through a new place.[681.82][681.82][S01. He was supposed to preach that particular evening.[684.82][684.82][S01. He was supposed to preach that particular evening.[687.82][687.82][S01. He met a young boy.[689.82][689.82][S01. He met a young boy.[692.82][692.82][S01. You know how far the where the post office is?[695.82][695.82][S01. You know how far the where the post office is?[698.82][698.82][S01. Where is it? And then he guided him.[701.82][701.82][S01. Where is it? And then he guided him.[704.82][704.82][S01. After all, Reverend Billy Graham added one more sentence.[707.82][707.82][S01. After all, Reverend Billy Graham added one more sentence.[710.82][710.82][S01. This evening, I will be preaching on this subject to show you the way to heaven[715.82][715.82][S01. And then you should attend that meeting.[718.82][718.82][S01. And then you should attend that meeting.[721.82][721.82][S01. You know, the young man shot back.[728.82][728.82][S01. You know, the young man shot back.[731.82][731.82][S01. I won't come for that meeting.[734.82][734.82][S01. I won't come for that meeting.[737.82][737.82][S01. You don't even know the way to the post office, you will show me the way to heaven.[740.82][740.82][S01. You don't even know the way to the post office, you will show me the way to heaven.[743.82][743.82][S01. You don't even know the way to the post office, you will show me the way to heaven.[746.82][746.82][S01. Mockery, making fun of this.[749.82][749.82][S01. Mockery, making fun of this.[752.82][752.82][S01. This is the generation that we are living in.[755.82][755.82][S01. This is the generation that we are living in.[758.82][758.82][S01. The word of God says, "Thou shall love the truth, thou shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free."[761.82][761.82][S01. The word of God says, "Thou shall love the truth, thou shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free."[764.82][764.82][S01. The word of God says, "Thou shall love the truth, thou shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free."[767.82][767.82][S01. Greeks, Jews, Romans, they all had books and genealogies written.[773.82][773.82][S01. Greeks, Jews, Romans, they all had books and genealogies written.[776.82][776.82][S01. Greeks, Jews, Romans, they all had books and genealogies written.[779.82][779.82][S01. We see in the book of Chronicles, we see in the book of Nahamaa.[783.82][783.82][S01. We see in the book of Chronicles, we see in the book of Nahamaa.[786.82][786.82][S01. So according to that, the genealogy was considered,[792.82][792.82][S01. According to that, the number of children that even the number of children they had was recorded in that.[798.82][798.82][S01. According to that, the number of children that even the number of children they had was recorded in that.[801.82][801.82][S01. And about, in the book of Jeremiah, chapter 22,[808.82][808.82][S01. We read about a person, Koniah, it is mentioned, he died childless.[813.82][813.82][S01. And about, in the book of Jeremiah, chapter 22,[816.82][816.82][S01. We read about a person, Koniah, it is mentioned, he died childless.[819.82][819.82][S01. According to, according to the things written in that book, the priesthood was entrusted to them.[830.82][830.82][S01. According to, according to the things written in that book, the priesthood was entrusted to them.[833.82][833.82][S01. And about, in the book of Jeremiah, chapter 22,[836.82][836.82][S01. We read about a person, Koniah, it is mentioned, he died childless.[843.82][843.82][S01. According to, according to the things written in that book, the priesthood was entrusted to them.[846.82][846.82][S01. According to, according to the things written in that book, the priesthood was entrusted to them.[850.82][850.82][S01. A minister would hand over the book of those convicted and acquitted.[853.82][853.82][S01. A minister would hand over the book of those convicted and acquitted.[856.82][856.82][S01. A minister would hand over the book of those convicted and acquitted.[859.82][859.82][S01. And then along with that, and it was the souring which would decide what to do with that person.[868.82][868.82][S01. And then along with that, and it was the souring which would decide what to do with that person.[871.82][871.82][S01. The authority to acquit him or convict him.[877.82][877.82][S01. The authority to acquit him or convict him.[880.82][880.82][S01. The authority to acquit him or convict him.[883.82][883.82][S01. Fear him, who has authority to kill you and to put you into hellfire.[892.82][892.82][S01. Fear him, who has authority to kill you and to put you into hellfire.[895.82][895.82][S01. When you just pass the commandment of the Lord, we will end up there.[901.82][901.82][S01. When you just pass the commandment of the Lord, we will end up there.[904.82][904.82][S01. The first book that I would like to mention about is the book of the living.[911.82][911.82][S01. The first book that I would like to mention about is the book of the living.[914.82][914.82][S01. There is not there in another language, but we can see in English and even in Hebrew and Greek.[920.82][920.82][S01. There is not there in another language, but we can see in English and even in Hebrew and Greek.[923.82][923.82][S01. When we turn to the book of Psalms 16, verse 28.[931.82][931.82][S01. When we turn to the book of Psalms 16, verse 28.[934.82][934.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[937.82][937.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[940.82][940.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[943.82][943.82][S01. Let them be blotted out of the book of the living and not be written with the righteous.[949.82][949.82][S01. In Tamil, it is mentioned as the book of life, but in English it is mentioned as book of the living.[957.82][957.82][S01. In Tamil, it is mentioned as the book of life, but in English it is mentioned as book of the living.[960.82][960.82][S01. According to the Old Testament standard, according to the dispensation of conscience,[967.82][967.82][S01. According to the dispensation of law, people who live that upright life, their names were written in the book of the living.[974.82][974.82][S01. According to the dispensation of law, people who live that upright life, their names were written in the book of the living.[977.82][977.82][S01. The Lord has sent us to this world.[980.82][980.82][S01. The Lord has sent us to this world.[983.82][983.82][S01. The Lord has sent us to this world.[986.82][986.82][S01. Jesus makes mention of it in the book of Matthew, chapter 22, verse 32.[993.82][993.82][S01. Jesus makes mention of it in the book of Matthew, chapter 22, verse 32.[996.82][996.82][S01. The Lord has sent us to this world.[999.82][999.82][S01. The Lord has sent us to this world.[1002.82][1002.82][S01. The Lord has sent us to this world.[1005.82][1005.82][S01. 22:32.[1009.82][1009.82][S01. God is not the God of the dead but of the living.[1014.82][1014.82][S01. I am the God of Abraham, I am the God of Jacob, Isaac, I am the God of Jacob, he says.[1021.82][1021.82][S01. I am the God of Abraham, I am the God of Jacob, Isaac, I am the God of Jacob, he says.[1024.82][1024.82][S01. In the Old Testament, we must understand, they don't die, they sleep.[1030.82][1030.82][S01. In the Old Testament, we must understand, they don't die, they sleep.[1033.82][1033.82][S01. But according to a KJV translation, even about some wicked kings also,[1043.82][1043.82][S01. It is mentioned that they slept, but it is a wrong translation.[1047.82][1047.82][S01. But according to a KJV translation, even about some wicked kings also,[1050.82][1050.82][S01. It is mentioned that they slept, but it is a wrong translation.[1053.82][1053.82][S01. But according to a KJV translation, even about some wicked kings also,[1056.82][1056.82][S01. The same time, when you see the origin in other places.[1059.82][1059.82][S01. The same time, when you see the origin in other places.[1062.82][1062.82][S01. For the book of the living, the word zaoh is mentioned.[1067.82][1067.82][S01. For the book of the living, the word zaoh is mentioned.[1070.82][1070.82][S01. In Hebrew, it is mentioned as kahii.[1074.82][1074.82][S01. In Hebrew, it is mentioned as kahii.[1077.82][1077.82][S01. But for book of life, something else is mentioned.[1082.82][1082.82][S01. But for book of life, something else is mentioned.[1085.82][1085.82][S01. The meaning we mention is.[1088.82][1088.82][S01. The meaning we mention is.[1091.82][1091.82][S01. So then, that is called fullness of life.[1096.82][1096.82][S01. So then, that is called fullness of life.[1099.82][1099.82][S01. Coming back to the book of the living.[1102.82][1102.82][S01. There is a beautiful translation, it is only there in Tamil, it is not there in other language.[1109.82][1109.82][S01. There is a beautiful translation, it is only there in Tamil, it is not there in other language.[1112.82][1112.82][S01. Return to the book of Genesis, chapter 49, verse 33.[1115.82][1115.82][S01. Return to the book of Genesis, chapter 49, verse 33.[1118.82][1118.82][S01. It is not mentioned that he died, it is mentioned, he lived and went to be with his house.[1126.82][1126.82][S01. It is not mentioned that he died, it is mentioned, he lived and went to be with his house.[1129.82][1129.82][S01. He is the one who died.[1132.82][1132.82][S01. He is the one who died.[1135.82][1135.82][S01. And when Jacob had made an end of commanding his sons,[1140.82][1140.82][S01. He gathered up his feet into the bed and ended up the ghost and was gathered unto his people.[1145.82][1145.82][S01. In Tamil interpretation, it is beautiful, he lived and went to be with his father.[1151.82][1151.82][S01. In Tamil interpretation, it is beautiful, he lived and went to be with his father.[1154.82][1154.82][S01. So the Old Testament says, they lived an upright life, though they lived yet they speak.[1161.82][1161.82][S01. So the Old Testament says, they lived an upright life, though they lived yet they speak.[1164.82][1164.82][S01. People lived according to their conscience, like people like Noah and others.[1171.82][1171.82][S01. People lived according to their conscience, like people like Noah and others.[1174.82][1174.82][S01. One more verse to prove this is.[1178.82][1178.82][S01. One more verse to prove this is.[1181.82][1181.82][S01. Return to the book of First Kings, chapter 11, verse 21.[1184.82][1184.82][S01. Return to the book of First Kings, chapter 11, verse 21.[1187.82][1187.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1190.82][1190.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1193.82][1193.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1196.82][1196.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1199.82][1199.82][S01. And when He had heard in Egypt that David slept with his fathers[1203.82][1203.82][S01. And the jaw, the captive of the host, was dead.[1206.82][1206.82][S01. What is the difference here?[1209.82][1209.82][S01. What is the difference here?[1212.82][1212.82][S01. David slept with his fathers, but jaw died in dispensation.[1216.82][1216.82][S01. David slept with his fathers, but jaw died in dispensation.[1219.82][1219.82][S01. There was a book in the Old Testament, and even Moses makes mention about it.[1225.82][1225.82][S01. There was a book in the Old Testament, and even Moses makes mention about it.[1228.82][1228.82][S01. There was a book in the Old Testament, and even Moses makes mention about it.[1231.82][1231.82][S01. There was a book in the Old Testament, and even Moses makes mention about it.[1234.82][1234.82][S01. There was a book in the Old Testament, and even Moses makes mention about it.[1237.82][1237.82][S01. There was a book in the Old Testament, and even Moses makes mention about it.[1240.82][1240.82][S01. So that is why it is mentioned, block my name out of the book.[1244.82][1244.82][S01. So that is why it is mentioned, block my name out of the book.[1247.82][1247.82][S01. When we turn to the book of Exodus, chapter 32, verse 32.[1251.82][1251.82][S01. When we turn to the book of Exodus, chapter 32, verse 32.[1254.82][1254.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1257.82][1257.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1260.82][1260.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1263.82][1263.82][S01. Yet now, if thou wilt forgive this sin, and if not, block me, I pray thee,[1270.82][1270.82][S01. Out of the book which thou hast written.[1273.82][1273.82][S01. This is what we call the book of the living, which was for the Old Testament says.[1278.82][1278.82][S01. This is what we call the book of the living, which was for the Old Testament says.[1281.82][1281.82][S01. Moses had an understanding that God had authority to write the names,[1288.82][1288.82][S01. God had authority to blot those names also.[1291.82][1291.82][S01. In the book of the living, the names are written in the book of the living.[1294.82][1294.82][S01. In the book of the living, the names are written in the book of the living.[1297.82][1297.82][S01. In the book of the living, the names are written in the book of the living.[1300.82][1300.82][S01. But what does God say?[1303.82][1303.82][S01. Any person who comes in sin, his name I will blot them from that book.[1307.82][1307.82][S01. Any person who comes in sin, his name I will blot them from that book.[1310.82][1310.82][S01. By that, we should understand, that though our names are written, still it can be blotted out.[1318.82][1318.82][S01. By that, we should understand, that though our names are written, still it can be blotted out.[1321.82][1321.82][S01. Is there a group which says, "One saved, ever saved."[1324.82][1324.82][S01. Is there a group which says, "One saved, ever saved."[1327.82][1327.82][S01. I will come to that later.[1330.82][1330.82][S01. I will come to that later.[1333.82][1333.82][S01. So the first book is the book of the living.[1340.82][1340.82][S01. So the first book is the book of the living.[1343.82][1343.82][S01. Mostly, it was above for the Old Testament says.[1346.82][1346.82][S01. Mostly, it was above for the Old Testament says.[1349.82][1349.82][S01. Their sins were covered.[1352.82][1352.82][S01. But they live according to their conscience, they live according to the word of God,[1357.82][1357.82][S01. And they will live according to the commandment of the Lord.[1360.82][1360.82][S01. And God himself gives a beautiful testimony about him.[1363.82][1363.82][S01. But they live according to their conscience, they live according to the word of God,[1366.82][1366.82][S01. But they live according to their conscience, they live according to the word of God,[1369.82][1369.82][S01. But they live according to their conscience, they live according to the word of God,[1372.82][1372.82][S01. But they live according to their conscience, they live according to the word of God,[1375.82][1375.82][S01. They don't want to mention more on this book.[1378.82][1378.82][S01. They don't want to mention more on this book.[1381.82][1381.82][S01. We will go to the next book.[1384.82][1384.82][S01. We will go to the next book.[1387.82][1387.82][S01. It is called the book of life.[1390.82][1390.82][S01. So it is mentioned five times, all especially in English, all in the New Testament,[1394.82][1394.82][S01. Not a single place in the Old Testament.[1397.82][1397.82][S01. In the book of the living, the names are written in the book of the living.[1400.82][1400.82][S01. In the book of the living, the names are written in the book of the living.[1403.82][1403.82][S01. Philippians, chapter 4, verse 3.[1406.82][1406.82][S01. Philippians, chapter 4, verse 3.[1409.82][1409.82][S01. Revelation, chapter 3, verse 5.[1412.82][1412.82][S01. Revelation, chapter 20, verse 12, verse 15.[1418.82][1418.82][S01. Revelation, chapter 20, verse 19.[1425.82][1425.82][S01. All these places, it is mentioned as book of life.[1431.82][1431.82][S01. All these places, it is mentioned as book of life.[1434.82][1434.82][S01. So what should we do to enter into this book, that our names will be entered into the book of life?[1441.82][1441.82][S01. So what should we do to enter into this book, that our names will be entered into the book of life?[1444.82][1444.82][S01. So what should we do to enter into this book, that our names will be entered into the book of life?[1447.82][1447.82][S01. So, there was a child of God who served with me.[1451.82][1451.82][S01. So, there was a child of God who served with me.[1454.82][1454.82][S01. And her father died a miserable death, he did not believe in God,[1459.82][1459.82][S01. And demons were pulling him to eternal hellfire.[1463.82][1463.82][S01. In the future, the child of God will be buried in a grave.[1468.82][1468.82][S01. In the future, the child of God will be buried in a grave.[1471.82][1471.82][S01. In the future, the child of God will be buried in a grave.[1474.82][1474.82][S01. This girl was living as a sinner.[1479.82][1479.82][S01. This girl was living as a sinner.[1482.82][1482.82][S01. And at the same time, God showed her in the vision.[1485.82][1485.82][S01. And at the same time, God showed her in the vision.[1488.82][1488.82][S01. How Satan's were dragging her.[1491.82][1491.82][S01. She was crying and crying and said, "Please, allow, let my father go."[1498.82][1498.82][S01. She was crying and crying and said, "Please, allow, let my father go."[1501.82][1501.82][S01. By that, she was crying and crying and said, "Please, allow, let my father go."[1504.82][1504.82][S01. He did not accept him, his name was not written in the book of life.[1507.82][1507.82][S01. He did not accept him, his name was not written in the book of life.[1510.82][1510.82][S01. Waiter, she saw that dream, she saw that vision, and then she was shocked,[1518.82][1518.82][S01. And she came to the theatre, accepted Christ as her person and savior,[1524.82][1524.82][S01. And then today she is a servant of God.[1527.82][1527.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1530.82][1530.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1533.82][1533.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1536.82][1536.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1539.82][1539.82][S01. Father was a long Christian who was understood.[1543.82][1543.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1546.82][1546.82][S01. But at the same time, he did not live a life according to the word of God.[1550.82][1550.82][S01. But at the same time, he did not live a life according to the word of God.[1553.82][1553.82][S01. So what is the first thing that we have to do to have our names written in the book of life?[1558.82][1558.82][S01. So what is the first thing that we have to do to have our names written in the book of life?[1561.82][1561.82][S01. If we want to do our names written in the book of life,[1564.82][1564.82][S01. John, chapter 5, verse 24.[1567.82][1567.82][S01. John, chapter 5, verse 24.[1570.82][1570.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1573.82][1573.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1576.82][1576.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1579.82][1579.82][S01. The first verse of the book is, "The Lord has sent us to this world."[1582.82][1582.82][S01. Verily, verily, I say unto you, keep not here with my word,[1586.82][1586.82][S01. And believe that all humans that send me have everlasting life[1590.82][1590.82][S01. And shall not come into condemnation, but has passed from death unto life.[1594.82][1594.82][S01. He is passed from death unto life.[1599.82][1599.82][S01. He is passed from death unto life.[1602.82][1602.82][S01. So, how will you come from death to life?[1607.82][1607.82][S01. So, how will you come from death to life?[1610.82][1610.82][S01. That is what, it is mentioned as the way of salvation.[1614.82][1614.82][S01. That is what, it is mentioned as the way of salvation.[1617.82][1617.82][S01. God ordained Jesus and he came down into this world in order to save man.[1621.82][1621.82][S01. God ordained Jesus and he came down into this world in order to save man.[1624.82][1624.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1627.82][1627.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1630.82][1630.82][S01. None of those sins, none of the rituals in this world could save him and deliver him from sin.[1633.82][1633.82][S01. None of those sins, none of the rituals in this world could save him and deliver him from sin.[1636.82][1636.82][S01. None of those sins, none of the rituals in this world could save him and deliver him from sin.[1642.82][1642.82][S01. None of those sins, none of the rituals in this world could save him and deliver him from sin.[1645.82][1645.82][S01. None of those sins, none of the rituals in this world could save him and deliver him from sin.[1648.82][1648.82][S01. So then tradition cannot save a man, and rituals, the things that we do cannot save a man.[1655.82][1655.82][S01. So then tradition cannot save a man, and rituals, the things that we do cannot save a man.[1658.82][1658.82][S01. None of those sins, none of the rituals in this world could save him and deliver him from sin.[1661.82][1661.82][S01. Which for that purpose, Jesus had to come down into this world.[1664.82][1664.82][S01. Which for that purpose, Jesus had to come down into this world.[1667.82][1667.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1670.82][1670.82][S01. He saw that man was burdened with a load of sin.[1673.82][1673.82][S01. The child of God, the child of God, the child of God, the child of God,[1676.82][1676.82][S01. He knew that he could not save by himself.[1679.82][1679.82][S01. He knew that he could not save by himself.[1682.82][1682.82][S01. In my younger days, I have heard Chinese failure.[1688.82][1688.82][S01. In my younger days, I have heard Chinese failure.[1691.82][1691.82][S01. No, it's not, I think maybe, maybe a story, it was mentioned by one of our preachers in the convention.[1700.82][1700.82][S01. No, it's not, I think maybe, maybe a story, it was mentioned by one of our preachers in the convention.[1703.82][1703.82][S01. The two friends.[1707.82][1707.82][S01. The two friends.[1710.82][1710.82][S01. Both were running, chasing a rabbit.[1713.82][1713.82][S01. And afterwards, and they went to a marshy land.[1717.82][1717.82][S01. The two friends, and they went to a marshy land.[1720.82][1720.82][S01. His rabbit is neat, he just fled from there.[1727.82][1727.82][S01. The rabbit is neat, he just fled from there.[1730.82][1730.82][S01. It's light, it's light, so they did not get bombed down in that marshy land.[1735.82][1735.82][S01. The rabbit is light, it's light, so they did not get bombed down in that marshy land.[1738.82][1738.82][S01. So then, this person ran, one of them ran and then got stuck there.[1744.82][1744.82][S01. So then, this person ran, one of them ran and then got stuck there.[1747.82][1747.82][S01. And from there, he was shouting.[1750.82][1750.82][S01. And from there, he was shouting.[1753.82][1753.82][S01. And he was giving all instructions from there.[1760.82][1760.82][S01. And he was giving all instructions from there.[1763.82][1763.82][S01. You do one thing, you pull one leg and then try to pull another leg, then you will come out.[1769.82][1769.82][S01. You do one thing, you pull one leg and then try to pull another leg, then you will come out.[1772.82][1772.82][S01. Then you will come out.[1775.82][1775.82][S01. Later, he said, "Oh friend, I am getting down, highly helping."[1784.82][1784.82][S01. Later, he said, "Oh friend, I am getting down, highly helping."[1787.82][1787.82][S01. Even the one who was scared, he said, "I am scared, I am scared."[1790.82][1790.82][S01. No, you place your hand on your waist and try to jump, you will come out of it.[1794.82][1794.82][S01. The one who was scared, he said, "I am scared, I am scared."[1797.82][1797.82][S01. The one who was scared, he said, "I am scared, I am scared." इल्ले नी उन्डे इडुप्पिल काये वेट्टे कुदिंकम एच्चीसे नी मेरे वंदुविल्ले नाल मंजु सुन्ना
Again, he was sinking deep.
मरुमुडीम अवन इन्नुम आरमागम मोड़कीकोड़िरुद्धा
You know, those days, Chinese had pig tails.
अंद नाटकलिल चीनर्गर बरिया बालकोण्ड उड़िये वेट्टुपार्गर
So then, you would have seen in the photos also.
निंगल उरु वेरे अरे कुकाइपट्टा विलु पात्तुरुकर
He said, "Take hold of your pig tail and try to pull, you will come out."
उन्डिये अंद उड़िये एप्पडि पिडित्तुकोड़ि नी मेरे वर मुयक्षिसे निंदु सुन्ना
One more instruction here, don't you ever let go of your pig tail. The moment you let go of your pig tail, you will drown.
इन्नोर अरिवुलेगे अवन सेट्ट वाणिकिना नान उन्डिये तारे उड़िये नी विट्टुविदा नी अम्मी विट्टुविदा नी मोड़कीविड़वा निंदु सुन्ना
This is what it was.
इद्ददान अड़कु
Then finally, his father heard somewhere that his son was screaming.
इनके रुद्धाना अवरुडिये तगपन ईतनुडिये मगन इप्पुडि सिक्कीकोड़ि कदरीकोड़िरुकर देवी कुरित्तु केल्बीपट्टार
Finally came, and he was about, the water was about, and this dirty water was about entered into the mouth.
इन्त अलुकान तन्नीर अवरुडिये माहिकुल पोगुर अंद अलुका अवन मोड़कीविट्टा अंद नैरतिल तगपन अंगे वंदुविट्ट
Finally, he brought a blind, and pulled him out.
तगपन उरु बेरग अदिले उरु कत्ते कोड़ि वंदि एप्पडियो अवने वेडिया इरुत्त
You need a father, you need a person to pull you out of that slush and that horrible grit and mud clay, you cannot save yourself by, you cannot save yourself.
अंद सेट्चिले रुद्धि अंद उलगान सेट्चिले रुद्धि मयंगरमान कुड़िले रुद्धि उंगले थूकिये डुके उंगले वेडिया इरुत्तु विडुद्धरुत्तु उंगलुत्तु उरु नमर, उरु तगपन तेवाइ उंगला, उंगले विदुविक्याल्दि रचित्तुकोल्ला मुडियादु
Jesus said, "Come to me, oh, either laborer or heavy laborer, and I will give you rest."
वरित्तपट्टे भारम सुमक्रले नीगल नारु एनिडत्तिल वारगर नान उंगलुक्क इलेपार्गल तरुवे निंदि एस्वस्तुर
And whoever came to Jesus found rest.
यार लाम एस्वण्डे के वंदार्गर अवर्गल्प इलेपार्गले कानलेदार
Recitals came to Jesus.
सीशर्गले एस्वण्डे ले वंदार्गर
And even before that, they had heard about the Way of Salvation.
अद्दत्त मुन्नदाहवे अवर्गल्प रचिप्पन वड़िये कुरित्तु केल्बीपट्टरुद्धा
Gospel of Salvation, Gospel of Repentance was preached through John the Baptist.
मनंदिरुप्पदले कुरित्तुदान विशेषम योवान्स्तानन मूलमाग एर्कर्वे अर्विकपट्टरुद्ध
And that's the reason why Jesus mentions in the Book of Luke, Chapter ten, verse twenty.
एनवे दान एस्व लुका पत्ताम दिखारम इरुवत्ताम वशनत्तुक लिप्पडि कुरिप्पिड आगिलो आविगल उंगलुत्त तीलपडिकरदर कागर निंगल संतोषपट्टामल उंगल नामंगल परलोगतिल एडुति रुक्रदर कागर संतोषपटुंगल निंदा
Now I'm standing in this rejoice now, but the spirits are subject unto you, but rather rejoice, because your names are written in heaven.
They had depended for their sins.
अवर्गल्तंगल पावंगलुकागर मनंदिरुडि इरुद्धार
They had turned from their old ways.
अवर्गल्तंगल उडिये पणय वड़िगले विट्टु तिरियन्दार
From the time the gospel was preached through John the Baptist.
योवान्स्तानन मूलमाय सुविशेषम अर्विकपट्ट अंद कालतिले या अवर्गल्प मनंदिरुडि इरुद्धार
Demented, for the kingdom of God is at night, is at hands.
मनंदिरुप्पदले एन्ने दान परलोगर राज्यम समीपित रुकर
Your child of God, are you saved tonight?
अर्वयानक देवुडिये प्ले इन्त एकेहरम निंगल रचिकम्बुडित्तु कुरिंदु
Today, if you die, maybe you spend your night in eternity.
निंगल इन्त्रेक्के मरिक्के निरुद्धा नित्य तिलुमुडिये वार्के निंगल एन्के कड़ीपील्गर
You may die when you are ten, you may die when you are twenty, you may die when you are sixty, you may die in your eighties.
निंगल उरु वेरे पत्तवाइदु अल्लते इरुवत्तवाइदु अल्लते आरुवत्तवाइदु अल्लते उन्डिये एन्पदाम आठले रुद्धि एप्पडु वेंडुमाना अवन मरिक्कला
Recently, in one of a faith homes in Mumbai Centre.
समीपितले मुंबई सेंटरले रुक्रदान नम्मुडिये उरु विस्वास वीटिल
A young boy, twenty-two-year-old boy died, deceased.
इरुवत्त इरण्डाम वाइदु निरंबिये उरु वालिब कम्बी मरित्तुपोना
Didn't have any chance.
अवनक्के एन्द वायुकुम किटेक्कविल्ले
But there was a good testimony about it.
आना अवने कुरित्तु उरु नलल साची
So therefore, today, I may die today, you may die tomorrow, death must appear in our face.
आना उरु वेरे इन्त्रेक्के नान मरिक्कला नाले के निंगल मरिक्कला मरणम नम्मुडिये मुगर्तुक्कले नेरे वंदन रुकर
So therefore, how is your conscience? Have you got good conscience with God and man?
उंगलुडिये मनसाची एप्पडि रुक्रद देवनुक्क मुन्बाहु मनितनुडु उंगलुक्क नल मनसाची उंडा
Again, there was a, Billy Graham was speaking to a young girl.
बिलिग्राहन अवर्गल्प उरु वालिब प्ले उड़ पेसिकोड़िरुद्ध
Give your heart to Jesus.
उन्डिये इरुद्धे तिनि एस्वुकु कोड
You know what, what was the reply?
अवलुडिये बदिलन्ने तेरियम
No, I'm too young, I want to enjoy the world.
इल्ले नान मिगवुम इल्लवाइदु उलगलाय रुक्रे नान उलगत्तिल अनुमविक्के विरुम्बुर
The world is so beautiful, I'm young, and then I'm energetic, and I've got everything at my disposal.
उलगम मिगवुम अनसाकर रुक्रद नानुम वालिब परुवत्तिल रुक्रे एल्लामुमे एनुडिये कायल रुक्र
So then, he asked her, "What will you do after you become old?"
बिलिग्राहन अवले पात्तु केट्टार नी वाइदु सेंटरलागुम्बोदि नी एन्न स्पीवाई
What was the reply given by her?
अवल सुन्ना बदिलन्ने तेरियम
Oh, by then, scientists could have found a way to stop death.
अद्दकुल विज्ञानिगल मरनत्ते कडुत्तु निरुत्त उरु वड़िये कंडुमडुत्तुरुपार्गर निंदि अवल सुन्ना
So much research is going to stop man from dying.
मनितन सावते कडुक्के अनेक आराज्यगल नरण्डुकोड़िरुद्ध
Millions, billions of dollars are spent on this.
कोडिकनकान डॉलर इनकागर सर्विडपडुगर
You must understand one, you must understand one thing. The person who goes into that research, the deeper he goes, and he will die early.
आना निंगल विलिंगीकोल्लवेंडि उरु कार्यम एन्ने विन्द सुन्ना इप्पडि बट आराज्यगले इरुपडुगर अवर्गल्प अवर्गल्प एन्द अनुकान अंद आराज्यगिन आलंगलु कुल कणद्धमोगुर अंद अनुकान सिंकिलमाग अवर्गल्प मरित्तुपोवार
They will die before all others die.
एल्लार्कुम मुन्बाल अवर्गल्प मरित्तुपोवार
So therefore, death is, it is appointed, man, it is appointed unto man, wants to die, and then afterwards that judgment.
ओरु दरम मरिप्पदु पिन्बु न्याय तिरपडिवदु मनिष्यनुक्क नियमिकपट्टरुद्ध
Do not leave this place without giving your heart to Jesus.
एस्वुकु उंगलुडिये उल्लत्ते कोडुकामल इन्त एडत्ते विट्टिनि तिरुम्बिसल्लवेंड
Young man, young woman, give your heart to Jesus and then depart.
वालिब सगोदरने, वालिब सगोदरीये एस्वुकु उन्डिये उल्लत्ते कंदविट्टे नी इन्त एडत्ते विट्टिकरण्डु सल्वायाह
Sometimes, you would have accepted Jesus, and you would have rejected him.
सिलवेले नी एर्कर्वे एस्वयी एच्चुकुंड अवने इप्पोर्डु मरिदरित्तु उरु नमरायुक्कुड
Oh, you may, you may have turned your heart, your heart would become, would have become cold and hardened.
अल्लते उन्डिये इरुद्धयम अद्दु कुलिंदुपोय अल्लते कड़ीनपट्टुपोय रुकला
You'd be certain, certain situations, you would have gone away from God.
सिलसुन्निलेगले मित्तम नी देवने विट्टु दूरम्बोन उरु नमरायुक्कु
So therefore, today you should give your heart to Jesus.
इन्तेकिनि उन्डिये उल्लत्ते एस्वुकु कोडुकवेंडु
You will abundantly pardon in this mention.
अवर दारालमाग मनिपार अवर मनिक्के दयपरुत्तुरुकर रुद्धि रुद्ध
We are living in the dispensation of grace.
नाम किरुवयिंग कालत्तु जीवितकोड़िरुकर
He doesn't want any person to die or perish.
अवर यावु मरित्तुपोवदे मांडुपोवदे विरुम्बुर विरुम्बुर वरल्ल
Whatever you read in the Book of Isaiah, Chapter fifty-five, verse seven.
एस्व आयपत्ति आयुद्धाम दिखारम एडाम वशनत्तिल नम्मुडा वास्तिक
Ah, so then, you will abundantly pardon.
अवर मनिकरदरके दयपरुत्तुरुकर अल्लते दारालमाग अवर मनिपार
Let the wicked forsake his ways, and the unrighteous his thoughts.
तुलमार्कन तन वड़िययु अक्रम कारण तन निनेविगरियुम बिट्टु तिरुम्बकणव
And let you return to the Lord.
What is the second quality of the person whose name is written in the book of life?
What is the second quality of the person whose name is written in the book of life? Revelation chapter three verse five.
(SPEAKING IN HEBREW) He that overcomeeth, the same shall be clothed in white raiment; and I will not brought out his name out of the book of life, but I will confess his name before my Father and before His angels.
So we should receive the Holy Spirit. I will come to that later when I mention about the book of the Lamb.
Yeah, it is mentioned. Without the Holy Spirit you cannot live an overcoming life. Yeah, it is mentioned. Without the Holy Spirit you cannot live an overcoming life. English Bible, it distinguishes between victor and overcomer. Taking from the page, from the message of Apostle Chief Thomas which increased about twenty years back. Apostle Chief Thomas, they were written in a prayer before forty years ago.
He mentioned in one of a workers meeting in Calcutta.
In Calcutta, he was talking about the kingdom of Saul, kingdom of David and kingdom of Solomon. He was talking about the kingdom of Saul, kingdom of David and kingdom of Solomon.
Kingdom of Saul, it was the kingdom of defeat.
The kingdom of Saul, it was a terrible kingdom.
Always fall, get up, again fall, always get up and then all within fall.
Always fall, get up, again fall.
Is that not your life today, at least of the life of some of you?
Sunday and Monday, you are very good.
After you go to college, schools and offices.
You are going to learn how to do your homework, how to do your homework.
Again go back to your old ways, mingle with your worldly friends.
You are going to learn how to do your homework.
In the midst of that, how many of us are able to preserve our holiness, to preserve our integrity?
This is the word of God, this is the word of Jesus.
In the world they say, be a Roman in Rome.
If you are a Roman, you have to be a Roman.
Do as they do, speak as they do, whatever they do, you also join with them and do.
If you do what they do, you have to be like them.
But at the same time, word of God doesn't say that.
But in the midst of that, how many of us are able to preserve our holiness, to preserve our integrity?
We that is called by God will do God's pleasure even in Babylon.
Even if they are cursed, they will praise him.
So kingdom of Saul, it was the kingdom of defeat.
The kingdom of Saul, it was a terrible kingdom.
We know what his end was like.
We know what his end was like.
Next, kingdom of David.
The kingdom of David.
Yes, it was okay. He was victorious. It is true.
It is not true that he was a terrible king.
Philistines will come against him, Moabites will come against him, Amorites will come against him, but he did not allow them to have mastery over him.
Philistines, Moabites, Amorites, they will come to him. But none of them will win.
Always battling, always battling. There was no hesitation.
But he was a terrible king.
So majority of us will be seen in this kingdom.
We are the people of this kingdom.
We fight, fight. We don't allow the enemy to overpower us.
We are going to fight, we are going to conquer.
He gave a beautiful example of a bird trying to have nest on the head.
A beautiful example of a bird trying to have nest on the head.
The bird comes with a stick, you try to try it away.
When the bird comes with a stick, you try to try it away.
Again comes, again. So this process continues, continues.
We are going to fight, we are going to conquer.
But you don't begin to see.
We don't allow the bird to lay eggs on our head. When the bird comes, we are going to fight.
That is, he explained that that was what we call victorious life.
This is the word of God.
But there is something beyond all this.
But it is beyond all this.
So that is what he explained as kingdom of Solomon.
This is the kingdom of Solomon.
He says, there are no adversaries or evil occurrence.
There are no enemies or enemies.
Return to the book of first Corinthians chapter five verse four.
When the book of first Corinthians chapter five verse four.
That is when the temple of Solomon was built.
When Solomon's kingdom was built.
(SPEAKING IN HEBREW) But now, the Lord by God has given me rest on every side, so that there is neither adversary nor evil occurrence.
No adversary, no evil occurrence.
No enemy, no enemy.
What does the bird say?
What does the bird say?
Why should I go to this person?
Why should I go to this person?
I am wasting my energy and then all my strength.
My strength is wasted.
How often I get beaten up also. I will lose one of my wings.
If I go to the airport, I will lose one of my wings.
He doesn't allow me to build the nest there.
If I build a nest there, he will destroy it.
Let me go elsewhere.
If I go elsewhere.
So that is the meaning of this verse.
This is the word of God.
So there was perfect harmony, perfect, no enemies, no adversaries, no battles.
There are no enemies, no battles.
So God is building up our spiritual life, you must understand.
If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful.
Our heart must be filled with peace, our heart must be filled with rest. It's only then God will be able to build a house.
If you want to build a house, you have to be faithful.
Is your heart full of rest tonight?
If you are faithful, you have to be faithful.
I am disturbed by anything.
If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful.
Again, I heard a beautiful testimony about Apostle Chief Thomas.
I asked a wonderful question of Apostle Chief Thomas.
Ah, the rest within is now dependent on the things outside.
If he is faithful, he is not a enemy.
Let anything happen around.
If you want anything, you can do it.
The rest within us, it should not be dependent on the circumstances around.
If you want anything, you can do it.
Let things come against us. Let there be problems, let there be losses, let there be debts.
If you want anything, you can do it.
He asked one more sentence to say, I am preserving the rest for the past forty-one years.
He said, I have been faithful for forty-one years.
So that is the, that is the experience our forefathers have said before us.
That is the Lord who has kept us faithful.
Try some things, please.
If you have a bad thing, you have to fight.
So then what is the meaning of word overcoming?
If you have a bad thing, you have to fight.
Not only overcoming, having lost, losing, word, another thing, sickness and other things.
You have to overcome everything.
And this is very important also. You should overcome sickness also.
You have to overcome everything.
How long are you going to be languishing in sickness?
You have to fight.
How long I will be afraid of sickness?
You have to fight.
There is something called torment. Devil is trying to disturb your mind.
If you have faith, you have to be faithful.
Recently, a child of God had a small boy on his tongue.
A small boy on his tongue.
Ah, it was a dark spot.
It was a dark spot.
He looked in the mirror.
He looked in the mirror.
Devil started to speak to him.
He started to speak to him.
You should be, you should, that should be cancer.
You should be, that should be cancer.
Oh, that, he was bit worried also.
He was a bit worried also.
He enters that into hands of God.
He enters that into hands of God.
Perfectly, devil is a liar and father of lies, you must understand.
If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful.
Because due to something or the other, that's all. But he will always put in your mind that this is something serious and you are going to die.
If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful. If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful.
Not only things around, even sickness also can disturb your peace and rest.
If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful.
Third, whose name is written?
Who is the one who wrote the book of life?
Return to the book of Philippians chapter four verse three.
When the book of Philippians chapter four verse three.
(SPEAKING IN HEBREW) And I entreat thee also, true young fellow, help those women which labored with me in the gospel, with Clement also and with other my fellow laborers, whose names are in the book of life.
Ah, the word of cheer forever, sisters also.
This is the word of God.
There are some who is not there for women.
But Christians, women are not there for women.
Who don't you? That is not for women.
Who don't you? That is not for women.
There are some here who have labored with me and then Clement also, and their names are written in the book of life.
There are some here who have labored with me and then Clement also, and their names are written in the book of life. If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful.
Laboring with the saints, you must understand.
If you are a Christian, you have to be faithful.
Then there is a convention like that. What do you do for this convention?
If you have a convention, what do you do?
Just like a guest, will you just come here and then go?
If you are a rich man, you have to leave.
You are not bothered much about your money, you must understand.
If you are a rich man, you have to leave.
Did you attend morning fasting prayer?
If you have a hard time, you have to pray.
A good believer will apply at least three days' leave during such meetings.
If you have a hard time, you have to pray.
When I was working, when I was a young boy, before I came for the ministry.
When I was a young boy, before I came for the ministry.
Ah, so the convention would start on Thursday.
When the ministry would start.
I would apply one weekly, one weekly. That week, I would not go to office.
If you have a hard time, you have to pray.
My leave was for such things, you must understand.
If you have a hard time, you have to pray.
Laboring and then toiling along with the saints.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
What do some people say?
What do some people say?
In our younger days, we have suffered. Let, ah, don't school now, now we have become old.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
As far as Christianity is concerned, there is no, we are, there is no retirement, you must understand.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
And he will not dismiss you.
If he will not dismiss you.
So therefore, we have got our part in the ministry. We have got our part to do in the ministry.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
I know, I hope you understand the meaning of the word labor.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
So therefore, do we suffer for the sake of the gospel?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Do we face losses for the gospel?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Are we paying a price for the gospel?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
So therefore, that is more important in ministries.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
You should join along with the saints and then do the ministry.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
I was mentioning in one of the convention about that young man, that blind person who got saved, whose eyes were open.
If you have faith, you have to pray. If you have faith, you have to pray.
Ah, but at the same time, he stood with Peter.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Standing with Peter in the beginning, it's okay.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Ah, so when you are, when your heel, your heart is filled with joy, filled with hope, and then you are enjoying dancing and eating.
If you have faith, you have to pray. If you have faith, you have to pray.
When he was healed, he stood with them. It is true.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
But in chapter fourteen, when difficulties and trials and limitations were raging.
If you have difficulty, troubles.
Fourth chapter, fourth.
If you have difficulty, troubles.
When Peter and others were put in jail.
If you have difficulty, troubles.
When they saw him standing along with Peter.
If you have difficulty, troubles.
So from the beginning of your spiritual life, in the midst of difficulties, in the midst of trials, you should stand with the saints.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Fourth.
Return to the book of Revelation chapter twenty-two verse nineteen. When the book of Revelation chapter twenty-two verse nineteen.
Do not manipulate the word of God.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
And if any man shall take away from the words of the book of this prophecy, God shall take away his path out of the book of life and out of the holy city and from the things which are written in this book.
Word of God is the word of God. You cannot manipulate the word of God.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
So many things are mentioned in the word of God, the way of life and as to how your child of God is supposed to do.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Travely, they have manipulated the doctrine of salvation.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Because it is mentioned that salvation is eternal salvation.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Ah, so therefore, there is a group that says, your salvation is eternal salvation. After getting saved, even if you fall in sin, you won't lose the salvation.
If you have faith, you have to pray. If you have faith, you have to pray.
If you are appointed in office, if you do something against that establishment, you need to say that they will keep you there.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
They have authorities to hire and fire you.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Ah, praise be to God.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
That is so in this world. So how most poor in heavenly kingdom.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
So you should be afraid of this and you should understand that you may, you can lose your salvation.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
That's what Saint Paul was writing to the Philippians, which he says, work out your salvation with fear and trembling.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Your salvation is precious and you should preserve that under all circumstances.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
I took my driving license when I was only nineteen-year-old boy.
If I was only nineteen-year-old boy.
I started driving from my twenty-fourth year.
If I was only twenty-fourth year.
I don't know how many laps I would have driven. I don't know.
If I was only twenty-fourth year.
Ah, so then even now recently, I drove tempo trailer for the short distance.
If I was only twenty-fourth year.
So just because of that, if I am careless, what will happen?
If I was only twenty-fourth year.
I've got the Dubai driving license also.
If I have Dubai license.
If I drive as I like, what will happen?
If I drive as I like.
Our Christian life is like a tightrope walking in a circus.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
From the beginning till the end, you should be careful.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Whether you are ten years in the ministry, ten years as a believer, or twenty years as a believer, or thirty years as a believer, you should be careful.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
After going halfway down or three-fourths down, if you start dancing, what will happen?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Jack fell down and broke his crown, and Jill came coming after.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
So a new driver can hit with accidents. An forty-year-old experienced driver also can hit with accident. Try it, he is not careful.
If you have faith, you have to pray. If you have faith, you have to pray.
Ah, so therefore, it is okay because it is eternal salvation.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
There are, there is a, even with water baptism, there are other instructions.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Spitting, pouring, and all this. Where is it mentioned? The word of God.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Word of God clearly states that one should repent, one should believe, one should confess his sins and then take water baptism.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
By that, we can understand that an infant will not take baptism. An infant cannot believe, an infant cannot confess. There is no need to also.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Even during the time of John the Baptist, they confessed their sins. That is, soldiers came to him and then publicans came to him, donkeys, that is, harlots came to him. They confessed their sins and they were baptized.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
There are many more things to mention about manipulating the word of God. Like, there is a perfect word.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Praise be to God.
Praise be to God.
Then we will go to the third book that is called Book of the Lamb, of Lamb's Book of Life.
When the book of the Lamb, of Lamb's Book of Life.
Revelation chapter thirteen verse eight.
When the book of the Lamb, of Lamb's Book of Life.
(SPEAKING IN HEBREW) And all that dwell upon the earth shall worship him, whose names are not written in the book of life of the Lamb, slain from the foundation of the world.
Twenty-one, twenty-seven also.
When the book of the Lamb, of Lamb's Book of Life.
First of all, you should, to have your names registered in this book, you should receive the baptism of the Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Return to the book of Hebrews chapter twelve verse twenty-three.
When the book of the Lamb, of Lamb's Book of Life.
Enough, enough.
To the general assembly and church of the firstborn, which is written in heaven, and to God the judge of all, and to this world.
When will you become firstborn? When will you become first, first fruit?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
In Romans chapter eight verse twenty-three, it is clearly mentioned by the baptism of the Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
(SPEAKING IN HEBREW) And not only they, but ourselves also, which have the first fruits, whispered, even we ourselves grow within ourselves, waiting for the adoption to wit the redemption of a body.
Dear child of God, have you received the baptism of the Holy Spirit?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Or do you reject? Do you think that there is nothing called baptism of the Holy Spirit? It is a demonic power?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Ah, they are crazy. They are mentally deranged.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
When I was serving, I was in one of the local faiths in Bangalore.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
So then a person in a disturbed state came to our faith.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Then we saw his soul is getting filled in the spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
And you know, he left from the patients and these people are crazy. They have all gone crazy.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Praise be to God.
Praise be to God.
You say that it is a demonic power?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
As now Jesus spoken about this Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
He has not mentioned the word of God, that the only sign of receiving Holy Spirit is unknown tongue.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
What did you read in the book of Acts chapter two verse thirty-three?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Therefore, being by the right hand of God exalted and having received of the Father the promise of the Holy Ghost, he had shared for this, which he now sees and hears.
When you receive the Holy Spirit, there is something to see. When you receive the Holy, when you receive the Holy Spirit, there is something to hear also.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
My parents come from CSI background.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
My great-grandfather, that is my mother's grandfather, did not believe in this Holy Spirit stuff.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Later pastors came, independent pastors came to our house. That is how we came into this room.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
The power of the Holy Spirit came upon two of my uncles.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
There were so many demonic powers in the family.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
When, when, when my great-grandfather saw that, he had to follow the feet of that pastor.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Ah, I've got many more things to say. I don't have time to mention.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
We have experienced the power of God. We have experienced God. We have experienced the Holy Spirit. How can we deny it?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Before the meet, this meeting gets over, you ask for the Holy Spirit and it will definitely give you.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Unless you are born of water and of spirit, you will not enter into the kingdom of God. That is, that is the word of God.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
You know, that was in the book of Luke chapter eleven verse thirteen.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
How much more the Lord will give you the Holy Spirit if you ask?
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Okay, we are going to make a deal with the Lord now, today.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Lord, if there is something called Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
I don't believe in the Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
All these days, I did not believe in the Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
But if there is something called the baptism of the Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
I would like to receive it.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Forgive me, God. But word of God really states, a person who speaks against the son of man, it will be forgiven. If you are speaking against the Holy Spirit, you will never be forgiven.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
So therefore, these are the days we should wait in the baptism, in the presence of God and receive the baptism of the Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
I will pour out of my spirit upon all flesses the promise of God.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Thousands and millions are receiving Holy Spirit these days.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
More than in India, people are receiving Holy Spirit in South Korea.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Now the recent statistics, more than South Korea, they are receiving Holy Spirit.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
God has to give a chance to each and every one of them.
If you have faith, you have to pray.
Even God is anointing the people in the Catholic community also.
Even God is anointing the people in the Catholic community also.
Katholika samudha idesendhovgalum kattavabhishekathikpechukkara?
And there is something called baptism in the Holy Spirit which can change you altogether.
Parshutthavin nyanasthanamandhu oru anubhavirukkara adu ungalimuchilumai maachalukkudiya?
As I mentioned about the O coming light without the Holy Spirit you will not be able to live an O coming life.
Naan munnave jeyenbulagala jeeviette parathu kurithu sunnada pole parshutthavin abhishekam illamal ungalamuchilum jeyenbulagala jeeviette seyyamudiyaa?
You'd be in the presence of God and ask the Lord Lord if there is something called Holy Spirit I would like to receive it.
Nigal kattale samugathil kaathirundhu kattavathil vediikulugal andavare parshutthavin abhishekam enthi ondu irukkumana naanade pechukkalavirumbagare?
There was a nominal Christian in Dubai.
Dubai desathile oru peyarukristavirindha?
He didn't know much about the Holy Spirit and other truths.
Parshutthavin abhishekathikurithu machta sattingalipachim adigamai avukkati tereyaa?
He listened to a message of Pastor Kodikunni once.
Pastor Kodikunni avudiyathuudhey varuvumule keta?
You know in that place itself he lifted up both hands and said Lord if there is a truth that I would like to receive the Holy Spirit.
Andavare parshutthavin udiyabhishekam undhu irukkumana adu satyama irukkumana naan parshutthaviya paravirumbagare ante redhle avar kayayavyatti jayamalina?
He is a very good believer in Kerala now.
Ipadu Keralaavila varnallu oru viswasiyai irukkara?
Last I saw him during last convention Chennai convention.
Akaranda Chennai conventionidhe naanavali sandikaleen?
God is showering his anointing upon many people.
Kattar aniyyagamme thandu abhishekathikpechukkara?
Take hold of God.
Devanai pachikulugal?
The migrant shall take it by force.
Malavandapandukkavavukkara?
Ah so therefore wait in the presence of God till you receive the Holy Spirit.
Nigal parshutthaviya pechukkalavu marayikum devanudiyasamugathil thodandukaathirukkara?
Today as you heard in the announcement you have got a special prayer at ten o'clock you go to the presence of God and receive the Holy Spirit.
Indha gini ngalari vipakal kettadu pole patthamani kinnamudhi viswasevitiyavukkara viseshu jebumirukkara adhupai kanadukkodi jebithu parshutthaviya pechukkavagala?
What is the second qualification?
Irandavudhu kadhu dienna?
No defilement.
Tiitut yedu irukka kuradu?
Revelation chapter twenty one twenty seven it is mentioned no the defilement.
Velipadukkana visesham ivativatramadigaram ivatitheyamasrathil tiitulladu ondhum adinpramesipadile? Enthi sollapadukkara?
Webster's dictionary states like meaning of the word define.
Indha tiitengradana vaathake Webster's agarari le ipidi oru vilakkam kodukapadukkara?
To tarnish to sully and to make unclean.
Tiitupadathuvadu asuttupadathuvadu asingamakkuvadu?
So therefore God has given you a garment now.
Devanikodudu ungalukkora vastrathay kodukkarakara?
He gives you by the baptism of the Holy Spirit he gives you the garment of salvation and garment of righteousness also.
Parshutthavin abhishekathikmulamaga ungalukke rachipin vastratiyam neerin vastratiyam devan kodukkara?
But at the same time you should not defile that.
Adhenarathil niggal ungal vastrathithi tiitupadathakuradu?
And just make mention of five or six defiance.
Aindhalanidhar vidamana tiitukkali kurithu naan kuripidavirumbagare?
Our way must not be defiled.
Namudiyavadi tiitupadakuradu?
Our way we should follow in the footsteps of Jesus.
Namudiyavadi anta Yesuvin adichivodukalidhe nam narthakavendu?
When you turn to the book of Psalms hundred nineteen verse one.
Nuchi patthamodam sangida mudalamasrathikunnam karandu varumbodhu?
Kathode vedatipadinaadukkara uttama markathar bakiyavangal.
Blessed are the armed defiled in the way who walk in the law of the Lord.
Undefiled in the way.
Vadiyirtiitupadadavarka enthi sollapadukkara?
In the book of Jude eleven and second Peter it is mentioned about the way of Belen way of Korah and way of Cain.
Playam udiyavadi kurithum Korah udiyavadi kurithum Kayin udiyavadi kurithum Yudha vinilum padinavramasrathilum irandam bedu? Vilum sollapadukkara?
Murder deception and then covetousness.
Adu kolai padamahoom vanchenayahoom purdaseyahoom irukkara?
So therefore God has asked us to walk in his path.
Devan tamudiyavadiyakalirunnaadukkumadi namakkakarpetirukkara?
So that is why we need the word of God.
Yenave ungalukke devanudiyavathay avasiam?
God has asked us God has shown us the way of life.
Devan namakkajiivam aakkathay tereyavadukkara?
Second James chapter four verse eight.
Yakobinandhamadigaram etthamasratham?
Our hard hands must be clean.
Namudiyakaygal sutthamai irukkavendu?
Devanadakil seyrungal appadu avar ungalakil seyravar pavigale ungal kaygalay sutthikariyinkal irumanamullavakale ungal irudheyakal parshuttamakkunkal.
Draw light to God and he will draw light to you cleanse your hands with sinners and purify your hearts be double minded.
Praise be to God.
Katharukusothiram?
Purify your hands.
Ungalakaygalay sutthikariyinkal?
Also read from the book of Psalms twenty four verse four.
Ivatitheyandhamasrathil thammasipoh.
Kaygalay?
Psalms four twenty four verse four.
Kaygalay sutthamullavanum irdaytil maasilladumamayirundhu tanathumave mayayiku opukkodamalum kabadai aaneydhamalum irukkavane?
He with her clean hands and the pure heart who have not rooted up his soul unto vanity nor sown deceitfully.
Clean hands pure heart clean hands.
Suttamana kaygal?
How many false certificates you are given?
Ettenai poi certification niggal kodukthirukkadi?
Ah now we're going to get?
Adi tirithu unmai kumaraaga pesuvadu?
Asking for car certificates?
Jadi saantidalgali ipidi maachuvadu?
Ah so then you pay the GST?
Nigal GST varisalathukkariyigala?
You take the proper bill?
Nigal sariyana bill vangukkariyigala?
You pay the proper bill?
Nigal sariyaga bill kattukkariyigala?
Ah why should we pay so much money it's God's money?
Yeerebala vandakkenam salathavendu enthi naanagakettukkalam devanudiyavandam enthi sollukkam?
Hand must be clean you should be pure in the presence of God.
Karangal sutthamai irukkavendu nam devanudiyasamugathil sutthamai irukkavendu?
When you buy something for ten thousand eighteen percent GST you are supposed to pay.
Nigal patthainruvaikke edhavu vangaavendu enthi sollumodhu adile ettu sadaviram GST indha niggal adi kattanthamavendu?
Hands must not be defiled.
Kaygal tiitupadakuradu?
False leave letters?
Poyyana leave letters?
You want to go for a marriage or you want to go for sightseeing but in sightseeing what do you write? I am sick.
Nigal oru kalyanathikupogavendu aladu ursichipakasuchilasalavendu ana niggal leave letterlennayathukkariyigal naan vyadiyayirukkane enthi?
But at the same time you must understand one thing.
Adhenarathil niggal oru taageetha velagikulavendu?
If the Lord has given you perfect health and strength then if you give sick letter tomorrow you will become sick.
Kattar ungalukkupurnamana soukettimharukettim kodukthirukkumodhu niggal vyadiyayirukkara leave letterlennayathukkara naalaki unmiyakame ungalukkavyadiyavakudu?
Third?
Mundaavada?
Zeppaniah chapter three verse nine.
Sapniyam mundaamadigaram unbadhamasrathil?
Pure and defined language.
Suttamana paashai?
You're a child of God.
Nigal devanudiyapillayayirukkariyigala?
You use fifty language.
Nigal asuttamana paashaiyavathayukkariyigala?
You speak vulgar language.
Nigal avaasamana vaathayukkariyigala?
You come for the tarrying making come for Sunday worship and then you speak in unknown tongues.
Nigal kathirupukkutthadukkum nyanayaraagalekum marukkariyigala aniye paashikalil pesukkariyigala?
But at the same time how come that you are speaking in foreign language?
Adhenarathil niggal eppadi kettavathay pesukkamudigiradu?
That was Zeppaniah chapter four three verse nine.
Sapniyam mundaamadigaram unbadhamasrathil thammasipoh.
Appadu janakal elarum kathode naamathay thodudukkandhu orumanapattu avarka aanradanay seyyampanikku naan avaragam paashay sutthamana paashayagam aarapadavay?
For they will exchange to the people a pure language that they may all call upon the name of the Lord to serve him with one consent.
You cannot say I have got pressure recent papers with her I have got pressure that's why I get angry.
Yenakka mana adhitapadukkara yenave naan kovapadukkali enthi oru sunnara ipidiyana nam sollamudiyaa?
You have not received the Holy Spirit have you not received the Holy Spirit?
Nigal parshutthaviya peravila?
The Lord has anointed you with the Holy Spirit your language also must be changed.
Parshutthaviya naan devan ungal abhishekamani irukkumodhu ungalakayavashayum mari irukkavendu?
Then in Titus chapter one verse fifteen.
Tiitum mudalamasrathil padinaidhamasrathil?
Suttamullavarkal kusagalamam sutthamai irukum asuttamullavarkal kumavisumasamullavarkal kumondhum sutthamai iradu avargalibuttiyum manasachiyum asuttamai irukum.
Unto the pure all things are pure but unto them that are defiled and unbelieving is nothing pure but even their mind and conscience is defiled.
Even mind is defiled.
Avadu manadum tiitupadukkara?
Conscience is defiled.
Avadu manasachiyum tiitupadukkara?
Praise be to God.
Katharukusothiram?
Our heart must be clean our hearts must be one with God our hearts must be one with the leaders.
Namudiyamanadu sutthamai irukkavendu adu devanoodu ondakappadukkavendu nam narthipukkavakaloodu ondakappadukkavendu?
Second Corinthians chapter ten verse fifteen what do we read?
Irandham rajakal padinamadigaram padinaidhamasrathil namenavasikiru?
Avan avidamittupurappattapodhu tanakke edukpatte rehabin kumaragi yonadabai sandhitte avanupasarithu yen irudheyum unirudheythode semaya irukkada pole unirudheyum semaya irukkada enthi kettaan?
And when he was departed then he lighted on the harnaba the son of rehab coming to meet him and he saluted him and said to him is thy heart right as my heart is with thy heart?
Praise be to God.
Katharukusothiram?
Your conscience our mind our heart was right with God and with our leaders.
Namudiyirudheyum namudiyamanadum namudiyasachiyum devanoodum narthipukkakaloodum semaya irukkavendu?
Then in Revelation chapter three verse four what does the word of God say?
Velipadukkana visesham mundaamadigaram nankamasrathil kattodevaathu enthi sollukkara?
Defiled garment defiled garment.
Tiitupadana vastiram?
So then our garment God has given us this beautiful garment.
Devan namakkadu indha alagana vastrathay kodukthirukkara?
Ah so then once upon we did not have a garment.
Oru kaathin namakkusariyana vastiram illai?
Ah so then the sinah doesn't have a garment it's taken in the sight of God.
Oru pavivastiram illadu naan devanudiyavarmigal nirvanaya irukkara?
What is given is a garment of righteousness garment of salvation so many other garments.
Devan namakkadu rachipin vastrathay neerin vastrathay ipidi pala vastrakalay kodukthirukkara?
That garment must not be salute.
Andha vastiram adukkara enthi kuradu?
It should not be spotted.
Adu karayipadakuradu?
Not a simple spot without spot or wrinkle or any such thing.
Adile oru karayum kodukaanapadakuradu karaythi nay mudalamavigal ondhumeladu?
So this is what this is the garment of the bride of Christ we must understand.
Ee naan krissuvin manavatiyudiyavastramaladu enthi nam kurinukkavendu?
Our life our spirits in life is that garment.
Namudiyavavi kuriyachiviam dhananda vastiram?
We are going to stand before him one day.
Orunnaam avarukkumunbaanu poynirukkapadukkaro?
There should not be any spot.
Namakkul andhavidamana karayum irukka kuradu?
A child of God went to help fire.
Oru devanudiyapillay naragakakiriki ponnargal?
Ah so then you know she went and stood before God.
Devanukkumunbaanu poynavargal nintargal?
The person was seeing it in a vision or something.
Oru nabaradu darisrathil oru kariyathil kandukkundirundha?
You know straight away what did Jesus say?
Yesu enna sananaram?
This is not the garment which I had given you.
Edi naan ungaluk kodutha vastiram allai?
This is not the garment which I have given you.
Edi naan ungaluk kodutha vastiram allai?
You can go immediately force to her and then put her into a deep hellfire.
Ni pognalam enthi sunnamathil oru satyavay apidiyana naragakakini thookivisara?
Praise be to God.
Katharukusothiram?
God willing will continue tomorrow.
Katharukusuthamana nam naalaki thodandupadipo?
Shall we close our eyes?
Nam namudiyakankaligundu?
The Lord is in arms.
Namudiyavavamudiyavathira?
He is in arms with all his power and glory.
Avat namudiyasarva magimeyodum sarva mallamayodum namudiyavathira?
All these days he was with us he attended for the meeting yesterday and today.
Indha naankalidheelavava namodukkudirundha neksikum vinjekum namudiyakuntathayavapodupadukka?
Shall we all stand up for some time?
Nam illarum sirinamidangal irupirundho?
Let the power of God come upon us.
Devanudiyavallamayana adu namayiranguvarattu?
Ah so therefore we are our books are our names written in the book.
Namudiyay peyarukkustakathil edhupadukkara?
Are you a slave are you baptized have you received the baptism of the Holy Spirit?
Nigal rachikapadukkariyigala kani nyanasthanam pechukkariyigala parshutthavin abhishekamalapadukkariyigala?
Have you preserved your life clean and white?
Ungalakayavichivathay sundamaga venmayadu?
The Lord will call you for five more minutes forty five minutes will finish it is busy now.
Ipadu marithuri kodukkara yenave ainevandukkala namidukkutthadi mudikepogaro oru abhishekathikpechukkara?
Ah shall we pray pray?
Nam illarum chedipo?
The Lord will come upon us.
Oru abhishekam namayirukkara?
My name should be written in the book of God.
Edi chidukasamayirukkara?
That should be peace.
Alipanigadavadi?
My garment must be pure.
Devanudiyavastiram sutthamai God?
I said peace on my left knee.
Devanu chiriyadu sutthamai panigadavadi?
Praise be to God. Praise be to God. Praise be to God.
Duraavat shaktaavat duraavat? I'm up.
The Lord is delivering many from both sides.
Kattar arayave naragakakirani viduviyakki kurukkara?
He's delivering many from high heights.
Avu nee avasatirukka? Edi vidukkadi kurukkara?
Today is the day of salvation.
Yenake akshane?
Today is the day of salvation.
Yenake akshane?
Tomorrow today I give you a heart to Jesus.
Aligala hidda kevulu hiyadiyakal?
The Lord is delivering very with the Holy Spirit tonight.
Andevanukkayavu parshutthavin abhishekam?
So many people pause up leave from this place.
Padakasosse vanuvayi nyanasukkali?
My God has most needed upon all flesh.
Naam maamsamana yavameen aviyavuchvane?
My God has all flesh.
Naam maamsamana yavameen devanagaya kattar?
My God has most needed upon all flesh.
Naam maamsamana yavameen aviyavuchvane?
The sons and daughters shall prophesy.
Ungalakumanaakumanaakalidhe tirukkamishanam sollukkavagala?
Let the Lord come upon you.
Oru abhishekam ungalana iranguvarattu?
Let the power of the Holy Spirit take over us.
Parshutthavin akkiriyakka? Patthi vikkadi?
Let the Lord come upon the servants of God too.
Athode vurigalaga abhishekam iranguvarattu?
Let the Lord come upon the servants of God.
Parshutthavin athode vurigalaga abhishekam iranguvarattu?
Praise be to God. Praise be to God. Praise be to God. Praise be to God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Praise be to God. Praise be to God. Mahdiyambe kureythoralla adhayayum mirisella avitaayuthi yudhiyukko avitaayuthi yudhiyukko anbiyayuthi yudhiyukko anbiyayuthi yudhiyukko adhayambe kureythoralla avarayum mirisella avitaayuthi yudhiyukko avitaayuthi yudhiyukko anbiyayuthi yudhiyukko anbiyayuthi yudhiyukko avitaayuthi yudhiyukko avitaayuthi yudhiyukko anbiyayuthi yudhiyukko Ask which is beginner?
Keenigal ungaluk kodukapadu?
Ask which is beginner?
Keenigal ungaluk kodukapadu?
What do you want tonight?
Indha giraavu ungalak eena tehvai?
What do you want tonight?
Indha giraavu ungalak eena tehvai?
They are answering God is in arms.
Jabathai madhur jabathikku madhur kodukkara devanamudiyavathira?
He is in arms with all his glory.
Namudiyasarva magimeyodu namudiyavathira?
He is in arms with all his might.
Avat namudiyasarva valameyodu namudiyavathira?
He is in arms with all his majesty.
Namudiyasarva machimeyodu namudiyavathira?
Praise be to God. The Lord has attended for a second day meeting for business please God.
Namudiyarakalakutthadiyavapurupadukkadiyala namatharistodhripo?
Praise be to God. He has attended for our songs he has attended for the message for business please God.
Namudiyapadukkali namudiyathuudhey lammachimurupurupadukkadiyala namatharistodhripo?
Praise be to God. With the assurance that our lives are in heaven let's praise God.
Varlogathil namudiyapirukkadiyadukkada vichyathika halamatharistodhripo?
Praise be to God. God may bless us to keep our lives clean and pure as praise God.
Namudiyachiviette tuumayaa gunsu kamaanada gunkhathakole kattanamagundu ishimuddiya ikkrimika istodhripo?
Praise be to God. God may have been attending remaining today's meetings let's praise God.
Veedamadukkai irandamalakutthadiyakattalpurupadukkumadiyai kattal istodhripo?
Praise be to God. Give it all all the glory to God let's praise God.
Devanike ellagana thimaginimsathina kattal istodhripo?
Vidhavim kisotramadu vayanthisotram? Mahkumavara dhena matrini kottinukkasaavu maathendi? Yengalai neeshidhe neeshidhe yengalai neeshidhe kettavu neetijangal kaitamantandi kaisotram? Kettavu mudalalakutthi yengalukkasaavu maathendi kaisotram? Kettavu kuttinukkala kuttinukkala harumudalum dhidhey nayve samugandukkasaavu? Aanipathivin bagni vortpatti aviyavi bagni vortpatti tumdhan bagni vortpatti vena vayabhishevamani merutisina daranavatikum vasurukkasaavu? Vivaa lakanna lakanna lakanna? Mahkchinaariyaa aadu veem kisotra jivu vatsukkale? Yedhavatthona kaanaparana yevano? Avan akkinikalavare karanakarare kallapadavatthu? Aadu veem nattinakkaare uschanakapadukkare? Jivu vatsukkana ghairavakusam tharakapadukkare? Adi jivu vatsukkali yedhavatthona kaanaparana yedhavatthona akkinikalare kallapadavatthu? Aadu veem kisotra thotra thotra kaisatavare? Aan vachitapadumav jivu vatsukkale? Veem yedhavatthavale abhishekamadu? Annyavadu arathol vatsanam chingalol? Aadu vudiyanadu jivu vatsukkale? Aadu veem kisotra thotra thotra kaisatavare? Abhishekam rachikapadavu? Yesu sondharathikara? Ettu mandu abhishekam rachikaladu? Vettu bala? Nan sanamalavu? Nan sanamaladu? Vettu bala? Annyavasanaavu abhishekamalavu? Annyavasanaavu abhishekathikpechukkala? Kathar vettu bala? Naanavu? Ettu mandu? Parshutthavamadu? Aitukkadi? Meranavu? Veshigalakadu? Meranakrathidukkum? Mayvayidho? Aayudubadukkadi? Turiyachimla? Endukkalo? Yavasigalakadu? Overoosukkala? Ettu mandu? Ettu bala? Overoosukkala? Indakka? Naanavu? Ettu bala? Vettu bala? Parishinakala? Vandukkalo? Vettaha? Kisotra thotra thotra kaisatavare? Narigala? Vandukkalo? Aadu veem kiruvayana? Naapet? Kiruvayam? Teesi mandukkari? Vettaha? Kisotra thotra thotra? Envachanam? Veruvayakal? Chirupadukkari? Naanamikka? Kaanavam? Vaichu? Book? Yavasigalakadu? Kedhalavai? Kiruvay? Kedhalavai? Kedhalavai? Kiruvayana? Naapet? Kiruvayana? Mudivadu? Aladu? Kuravina? Karikapadukkara? Udu? Kiruvayapunukkavadi? Nigal? Teesi mandukkari? Kiruvayapunukkavadi? Naapet? Ettu mandu? Varugakka? Vaithabadu? Oru var? Chalathinadam avinadam? Pravavattha? Devanidhakka? Paya? Maadukkara? Aadu veem? Vachitapadukkam? Navanavattha? Varugakka? Vaithabadu? Parshutthavam? Overoosukkala? Ettu? Parshutthavam? Velapatti? Kedde? Varugakka? Aasivaram? Aitu? Kedhalavai? Kisotra thotra thotra? Kedla? Kudichum? Kedla? Kana? Kudichum? Kedla? Kudichum? Varugakka? Devanike? Devasamudhi? Aasvadi? Kurumakal? Pae? Aasvadi? Devi? Duralakantukkavachay? Kedhalavai? Kedhalavai? Kisotra thotra thotra? Visayama? Devasamudhi? Vandu? Vamplakal? Yenake? Keenigal? Kedla? Kudichum? Sandhavathikul? Madhavakal? Vandhavathik? Nallavakal? Salushamakal? Kathurukkachimla? Ettu? Kachimlikal? Pedukkalo? Chagathudhi? Kana? Varugakka? Devanike? Sarutukkalo? Eesidhe? Namathukkalo? Kedhalavai?
With the grace of the Lord and the Savior Jesus Christ thou have conquered the sweet fellowship of the Holy Ghost rest in the high bidassin now and as Jesus comes in glory.
Amen.
Libia.
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 Libia.